All right, so let's call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education for Monday, December 10th to order. If I could ask everybody to stand and please recite the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, good evening, everybody. If I could have a roll call, please.
Stephen Arthur.
Here.
Ms. Bass.
Here.
Alex Berry-Cole.
Here.
Matt Curry.
Here.
Karen Lumsdahl.
Here.
And Malier.
Here.
Okay, so everybody is here. Our agenda this evening, we have two educational presentations. One is to review the D-128 mobile application launch, a major milestone for us this week, and two distinguished service awards, both students and faculty that we'll recognize this evening. Really no update on the President's Report. We'll have updates from both of our student school board representatives. We'll have an update from the superintendent. Approve the consent vote agenda, updates on program and personnel committee, facilities and finance committee. There is nothing from the property committee, a brief update from the seat hall, I believe. Nothing from the Illinois Association of School Boards. And then we will convene into executive session for two issues, one employment of employees, two collective negotiations matters. We will not be taking any action after the executive session this evening. And that should do it. All right? Okay. Let's start with our educational presentations.
Okay, we're gonna ask Mary Tadrick, our District Director of Communications, and Mick Torres, who's our District Director of Technology, to walk us through the historic launch of our new mobile app. And Mary and Mick and a number of other people have worked very diligently over a number of months to prepare us for this. The Board will remember, it actually started with revising the district logo to set the stage for the launch of the app. So without further ado, Mary and Mick, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Last April, we started working on the development of our app. And as you may recall, we worked with Blackboard Connect, which is really a national leader in developing apps for educational institutions. They do a lot of university apps, and we are one of the first high school districts that they have worked on developing an app for. We were hoping that our app would be dynamic, digital, give information, and resources that were interactive for our parents, for our staff, and for our students. And as of this morning, we are very happy to announce that our app was launched. So we are officially in the Apple App Store. We are on Google Play, which is for the Android smartphones and tablets. And as of Wednesday, we will be available for all other smartphone users, which would be BlackBerry and Windows Mobile. What we wanted to do this evening is walk you through, very quickly, the components of our app and show you a little bit about how everything works. Good, okay. Well, the first module that you see up there is Directory. And when you go in there, it gives you the ability to search for anyone who works in the district. You put in part of their last name, like Pranis, and you get their phone number, their email. You can contact them directly from that app, or you can save them into your contacts. So you could put in all of your students' teachers, have them at your fingertips within your app. The second part is the PS Portal, or Power School, which would enable all of our students and staff to log into Power School and look up their grades and do all of the things that they would normally have to go to a computer for. Social gives you connections to our Facebook, our Twitter, and our Flickr accounts for the district. So if you're someone who checks those a lot, it's all in one spot. Calendars gives you three, calendar for each school and the district, and again allows you to bring up dates for athletics, fine arts, and save those directly to your phone on your calendar, which is very cool. The next one, oh, sorry. Oh, it's sold out. Important numbers? No, news. The news component, pretty much what it says, it gives you news which is fed directly from some of our sources that we already have on our other social media and our websites. And it's all fed into one spot. Where are you now? Images.
Photos, the images.
Images. Again, these are fed from our Flickr account. So these are just a variety of different events and activities that take place at the school, all on your phone. Important numbers gives you exactly what it sounds like, the main numbers that are called at the school each day. So the main offices, athletics, and attendance. And you can dial directly from there. Videos, as it says, it'll let you link to videos and bring them up right on your phone, various activities and events at the schools. The link section right now includes Community Ed and the Foundation for Learning, and that's obviously a spot that can grow as we add more mobile-ready pages to our websites. And then each school has their own section, which includes, right now, fine arts, CRC, athletics, and the daily bulletin. So you can access anything on the bulletins right from your phone. I think we hit them all. And just a quick thank you to Dan Hernandez, who is our district webmaster. He did a lot of customized work on this app with Blackboard. And to our IT department for test-driving it for us. You know, two of our testers are here tonight. Are there any questions we can answer for you?
Actually, I just want to comment, actually, I think this is one of the neatest things that I've seen in a long time. Neat's not the right word, I apologize, I don't have a better word right now, because it's not really the techie feature of it, but I think from a communication standpoint, this is really huge. I mean, I for one am nuts about the navigation of the webpage sometimes. I feel like sometimes I have to go hunt for things, but this looks a lot easier. And Mick, you're not going to be happy with me when I suggest this, but you know, this whole technology thing for us, I think is becoming more and more core to what we do. And I don't know whether it's in the open houses or some of the other big parent events that we do, but we may want to look for ways to showcase this, or, you know, I could even imagine a technology session where if you get the lunch period, instead of going to the cafeteria, you go to the technology session and see all these things, because I think this is really a great, great project.
Thank you. And we will be doing that. We did send out an email to all of our parents today with information on how to download the apps, and to all of our staff, and retirees, and the media, so words getting out there.
Yeah, yeah, congratulations on this. I think it's a great thing. I've seen it become very effective at the higher ed level, and to see that brought down to the high school level, it's such a communication tool. It keeps everybody informed. It's, you know, everything in one place. Most people are carrying this around. They're not carrying their computer or their book of numbers or whatever. It's just such an effective and efficient way to do, to use it. Now you have to let the students use these more during the day so that they can...
Are we able to get to school board minutes and meeting minutes, things like that?
Videos.
Videos. What about the actual, any written documents?
Well, all of the District 128 websites, of course, are accessible through the mobile app, so you could get to the same things, the same resources you could through our website, only in mobile-enabled pages now, which are easier to read on smaller devices and are condensed versions of them.
And like any app that you have on your phone, it'll be constantly revised, and you'll get the little number sign by your store and just constantly update it.
One other question, is there the capability to, in some way, link up, and I'm thinking special promotions, like when we've done, when we did the seat thing for the auditorium, and we did Project Turf, I mean, is it possible, if I was just curious, what the special projects are and special promotions were, is there any chance there'd be a button to hit for that and say, oh, contact so-and-so if you're interested in Project Turf or something?
I'm sure that would go under links or possibly adding another module.
Okay. The beauty of this app and working with Blackboard Mobile Connect was the ability for us to do a lot of this customization on our end, so the ability for us to, without having to work through them, but develop a lot of these custom pages and custom resources, I think can open the door for all sorts of application for it. There are a lot of highlight kinds of events that we want to talk about, that we want to broadcast, that we want to promote, and you know, this is a great opportunity for us to customize this and many ways to do that. So there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for this to grow. The Harper app, as Jim alluded to, that they use in higher education and other universities, has multiple pages of icons, and I can just see ours growing over time to include just a number of new features that ultimately will even bridge to the learning applications in classrooms so that students can have more meaningful uses of this app through accessing digital content from their courses, assignments, be able to interact with assessments, so very similar to what they do in higher... Yeah, the real value here is with the students, you know, while it's great to have this information, like board information, that kind of thing, for the public, information for the parents, for phone numbers and whatnot, the real value in this is the students, because they're, you know, they're mobile-device-centric, this is where they live, they don't live on the desktop.
No, I think you're always being able to click and say what's for lunch today.
So it's, the value here is really with the students and how you can make their lives more effective and more efficient through this app. And Mick, you're right on too, with the number of pages that you wind up, it grows very quickly. This is just, this is a...
This is just the first floor.
Yeah, it's a great beginning, and there's a lot of stuff here, a lot of content, but it's only going to grow from there.
You can imagine they're going to get used to a whole lot of things, and they're going to go to college and not find things quite as accessible. That'd be interesting.
Is this tablet-friendly as well?
Yes. In fact, again, through the store, they can be downloaded and installed in any iOS device, iPods, iPads, any other device, Nexus Tablets, you know, any device that basically utilizes a mobile operating system, so.
Mary, Mick, you did, Mary, you may have said this, and I just happen to know this, so I might have missed it when you said this, but we're one of the first high schools in the Chicago area to actually have, high school district or district, to have the app feature. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you, thank you all for keeping us on the cutting edge, as always, in technology.
What's next? Just anything.
Stay on the edge of your seat.
He's just like Apple, he's gonna keep it under wraps until just before. Okay, great job. Thank you. All right, distinguished service awards.
The Board will remember, last month, our student representatives mentioned the fact that the LHS volleyball team finished in fourth place, and that had happened just the week before the board meeting, and they were still on their world tour after that. And so we just had the honor and privilege to bring them for us today and recognize their accomplishment tonight. So I'm going to ask Dr. Scott to come up and introduce the coaches, and we'll come up and introduce the team as well.
Thanks, Dr. Fleming. I wanted to introduce Coach Greg Loyka, who's in his fourth year as head girls volleyball coach at Libertyville High School. He also celebrated his 100th win this season, which is quite an accomplishment as well. And I also learned that this is only the second time in our girls volleyball history that we've been in the state series. So crucial for many things this season, and what an exciting championship run they had. So he's going to tell you a little bit about the season and introduce the girls.
I didn't prepare anything. I'm going to go off the cuff here. First, just thanks for having us, really appreciate you welcoming us tonight. And I don't have all the girls with me, I kind of narrowed it down and have segments of girls kind of representing the personalities of our group. Actually, a lot of our girls are off playing club, and tonight's a practice night for many of them. But we had a great season, the support that the community gave us, that our school community gave us, that our volleyball families gave us was just incredible. And really, all hats off to them and the work that they did, and I'm blessed with a great coaching staff that helps me to just pretty much put a skeleton in place, and then the girls do all the work, and they deserve all the credit. So it was the second time that we went downstate, and we were definitely the underdogs down there, and we had, if you were able to watch any of it on the web, pushed the eventual champions to the limit and had them up against the ropes and just couldn't quite finish. But it was exciting, memories for a lifetime for me and I think for the girls too. So I'd like to introduce them. The ones I have with me tonight, Jordan Bauer, who's a senior, she'll be leaving us. Brooke Donovan, defensive player, also a senior, two unrelated juniors, Cassian Karli Osmeyer. And one of our sophomores, her mom's here, Alex couldn't be here tonight, but this is Alex Basler's mother, one of our middle hitters who's a sophomore. So we graduated eight seniors who had, they came into the program with me four years ago, so really special class for me just to kind of see them from my infancy as varsity coach and theirs as well coming through. So it's just, I couldn't imagine a better group of girls to win, you know, the super sectional and go down to state and represent our school well, and I think we did that. And I'm just so happy for the seniors who are going to go off to special things, and then the ones that are come back, and we're going to try and do something again. So thanks for having us again, appreciate it very much.
Hey, girls, also take a picture before you go.
members have earned recognition as National Board Certified Teachers. These five join 12 of our teachers who have met the rigorous requirements of the National
We always have to take pictures when we go to school. That's good.
Board to bring our district total to 17.
Why don't you guys slide over here a little bit, we'll be out of your way of the public.
Tonight, we'd like to congratulate and extend appreciation to the following teachers.
I can just sit there behind them and I can dance.
Anywhere you want to go, we'll just kind of get around you guys.
Caitlin Bai, LHS Math. Dennis Duffy, LHS Social Studies. Tiffany Owens, LHS Science. Kim Raciac, Vernon Hills High School World Languages. And Josh Ravenscraft, Vernon Hills High School Science. These five join Maggie Castillon, Laura Guyard, Katie Hylla, David Kahn, Joyce Kleinheitz, Andrea Lara, Wendy Meister-Loria, Patricia Nora, Paul Reeve, Lauren Rust, Kristen Tarrant, and Brian Twiddell as D-128 National Board Certified Teachers. These district achievements, this district achievement is a testament to the excellence of the teachers involved in the NBC process. In addition, it recognizes the skilled leadership and mentoring work of Brian Twiddell and Paul Reeve with the NBC Cohort Group. Special appreciation and thanks goes to Brian and Paul for their guidance and leadership with this group. Would they please come forward for congratulations? And Dennis Duffy. Yes, Paul and Brian, come forward. Considering the fact that it was just three years ago that we've had now in that period of time, I think it's 15, teachers have accomplished NBC recognition, and it's really due to the work that Paul and Brian have done in leading this group and mentoring this group through, and I think they're going to testify to that more than I can. I'd like to express our appreciation to you two for your guidance and leadership. All right. That's all, over.
All right, that was fun. Okay. President's Report, as I said, nothing other than to say, really, the first half of the year is wrapping up quickly, so thanks, everybody, for a very good first half of the year. Student school board representatives, let's start with Ally in Vernon Hills.
Hi, everyone. Erin and I just downloaded the app, actually, and it looks pretty useful, so I think the students will find that to be really handy, especially because we're all on our phones all the time now, hopefully not in class. But, so anyways, to start off, Vernon Hills Sports, we're fully into our winter season, and I know Palms has had a very successful season, as always. They took first in their invitational this weekend, and also cheerleading is starting up again, and they had their first competition this weekend, and they took third. So looking forward to more from them. And girls basketball, I believe they're undefeated right now, at least in the conference, so they're off to a great start, and we're hoping to see same success as last year when they went all the way to state, because that was really exciting for all of us. I am part of the gymnastics team, and we've had a really good season so far. We have won two meets, which is the first time in a very long time, so our gymnastics team is off to a fairly decent start. And all the other sports are underway. I know boys swimming and diving had their first meet last week, so hope to see all success from Vernon Hills Sports this year. And for fine arts, the biggest thing going on right now is Allstate. We had I M E A, which was the qualifier for Allstate in both choir band and orchestra. That was a few weeks ago, and the Allstate lists were released, and Vernon Hills is sending 14 students from band, orchestra, and choir to Allstate in Peoria, which is a big concert and convention for about three days in January. So that's a huge accomplishment. I saw the list, and I believe in our area, Vernon Hills has the most students going to Allstate, so that's really exciting. Also, coming up is our holiday concert, and this year we had to make two concerts because we broke fire code the past few years, because it's such a popular concert. And it's really fun, lots of sing-along songs from both the choir and the band, and I'm really looking forward to that. Also, Chain Requires Magical Dessert is this weekend, it's our biggest concert. We sing about 24 songs, all a cappella, and we've been working really hard on that. So that's coming up at the Park District this Saturday night. Also, for theater, Theater Fest is coming up this January after winter break, and I know we're sending about 30 students, and that's like a three-day-long trip to University of Illinois to do theater conventions and see lots of shows. And we have one student in the Allstate musical, which is really great for her. And Romeo and Juliet, the play is underway, there's a little twist on it this year, so it's going to be pre-performed in mid-February, if you want to go see kind of a new version of Romeo and Juliet. Also, for student council, the seniors have been working on their blood drive that will be held coming up after winter break. And we've also started talking about graduation already, I can't even believe that, but we've got to get plans going, and we had our senior meeting to talk about graduation gowns and senior rings and all that, and gown fitting is this Wednesday, actually. So we're already starting to talk about graduation, even though we haven't even had winter break yet. And then also Adopt a Family is our next big thing coming up next Thursday before winter break, and that's always really fun. We've been collecting money in our third-period classes and donating some gifts, and I believe the wrapping party is either this Wednesday or next Monday. So everyone loves to get together and wrap presents and then see it all come together that Thursday night when Santa comes, and we're all really looking forward to that. So that's about it for Vernon Hills, thank you.
All right, great.
At LHS, there are a lot of similar things going on as well. The fall sport is officially ended, and winter sports are in full swing. Games and meets have begun, although it's too hard, too soon to tell which teams are the ones to keep your eye on as of now. In regards to fine arts, the LHS choir will be singing holiday songs tomorrow and Thursday for their annual Holiday Choral Fest. Tomorrow's rehearsal is a special performance just for senior citizens, which would be great for that. And the band will perform their holiday band concert next Tuesday night. We have a similar program at LHS at Vernon Hills called Wish, instead of Adopt a Family. Third-period classes raise money to buy gifts for needy families, and we have dinner as well next Wednesday night, where families pick up their nicely wrapped gifts and they have dinner, and their kids can play on inflatables and visit Santa and stuff, and I've volunteered at that event in the past couple of years, and it's a great event. And other news, students now have an extra reason to look forward to Fridays, as last Friday, March the 1st Friday in December, which means Free Hot Chocolate Fridays, which I know is a tradition that is famous at LHS, and everyone loves it, it's a great December treat. Many seniors that have already committed to college have a load lifted off their shoulders while the rest of us are still contemplating options, getting last-minute apps, and applying for what seems like endless amounts of scholarships. And needless to say, although it's been a great semester, everyone's looking forward to winter break.
Okay, so a lot of competitions have taken place since our last board meeting. So first off, the math team in the Illinois Math League is still first in their region. And then after the NSML meet that took place last month, after placing first in all of the different individual topics at their site, the math team advanced from 17th in the northern suburbs to 10th. The debate team has had two debates so far, one in November where we had three semifinalists, two varsity, one JV, and one person get a speaker award. And then this month, at Buffalo Grove, we had one person win a speaker award and one person get second overall. The robotics team has done very well at their first competition last month. Of the three teams that went from Libertyville, one team got first place and one team got third place. A SIMUN, which is the Chicago International Model UN Conference, took place this weekend in Chicago, and we had, of the 36 people that went, most of which were freshmen and sophomores, we had one person win a Best Delegate Award and two people win a Delegate's Choice Award. And then lastly, the WISE team from Libertyville went to the OP Science Competition at the Milwaukee School of Engineering. Of the 16 kids that went, one student won an award in the individual science topic, or individual science category, and then five people won a place in the top 16 overall individuals. And I think that concludes it from Libertyville.
All right, great job, you guys, thank you. Okay. Superintendent's Report.
Okay, more good news this month, always exciting. Congratulations to LHS 2000 graduate Erin Lawler on being named Chairman of the Lake County Board. Many of you know Erin, just a really, really rising star, I think, in the political world and a great guy, so it's very exciting for him. Congratulations to the LHS 2009 graduate Dennis Mudd on being named to the Capital One Academic All-American Men's Soccer 13. Dennis is a senior double-majoring in chemistry and biology at Marion University in Fondulak, Wisconsin. VHHS senior John Rudnick won two Best Speaker Awards and tied for a third at the Fall Midwest JSA Conference held last week in Madison, Wisconsin. Approximately 500 students from across the Midwest attended the conference. Congratulations to District 128 special Olympian John Survey, who took sixth place at the state bowling tournament today in Peoria. The LHS WISE team, that's worldwide youth in science and engineering, finished second at the OP Science Competition at the Milwaukee School of Engineering. As was noted, in addition to the team placing second out of 16 teams, the following five team members were recognized as individual medalists. Nishad Fadke, Stefan Markovic, Alex Wang, Richard Pan, and Tim Lee. Congratulations to LHS and VHHS teachers who received innovation grants from the District 128 Foundation for Learning at a special presentation and luncheon held November 21st at the district office. The foundation received a record number of grant proposals this year, and the winners received $25,339 in funding for projects that will enhance and enrich student learning at LHS and VHHS. The latest round of grant winners brings the total amount of money given by the foundation for innovation grants in the last six years to $76,198.
Many of you know Aaron, just a really, really rising star, I think, in the political world, and a great guy, so it's very exciting for him. Congratulations to the LHS 2009 graduate Dennis Mudd on being named to the Capital One Academic All-American Men's Soccer 13. Dennis is a senior double-majoring in chemistry and biology at Marion University in Fondulock, Wisconsin. VHHS senior John Rudnick won two best speaker awards and tied for a third at the Fall Midwest JSA Conference held last week in Madison, Wisconsin. Approximately 500 students from across the Midwest attended the conference. Congratulations to District 128 Special Olympian John Survey, who took sixth place at the state polling tournament today in Peoria. The LHS WISE team, that's Worldwide Youth in Science and Engineering, finished second at the OP Science Competition at the Milwaukee School of Engineering. As was noted, in addition to the team placing second out of 16 teams, the following five team members were recognized as individual medalists. Nishad Fadke, Stefan Markovic, Alex Wang, Richard Pan, and Tim Lee. Congratulations to LHS and VHHS teachers who received innovation grants from the District 128 Foundation for Learning at a special presentation and luncheon held November 21st at the district office. The foundation received a record number of grant proposals this year, and the winners received $25,339 in funding for projects that will enhance and enrich student learning at LHS and VHHS. The latest round of grant winners brings the total amount of money given by the foundation for innovation grants in the last six years to $76,198. This year's grant recipients were Karen Kim, Sarah Stoudt, Karen Day, Ellen Macias, Lindsay Branson, Nancy Stetter, Sherry Rooks, Lauren Rust, Katie Jablinski, Maggie Faulkner, Linda Ward, Elaine Petrakot, Nancy Shipley, Denise Caden, Laura Tracy, John Taylor, Amanda Warfield, Kaitlyn Bai, Dennis Duffy, Jason Rush, Jeremy Little, Adam Lukin, Alyssa Clark, Jason Newberger, Beth Richards, Angela Naylor, Emily Cornor, David Schroeder, Craig Schmidt, Jeff Mallon, Tim Regner, Matt Thompson, Jeremy Gerlach, David Kreutz, and Casey Albin. Congratulations to all of them, and thanks so much to the foundation for their continued support of education in the district. Also, from the superintendent's report tonight, we were scheduled to have a vote on the, I think this is Rick the Village of Vernon Hills, intergovernmental turf agreement, and council for the village is just doing a final review before we get the final agreement, so we'll bring this to the board in January to be approved. And lastly, on the superintendent's report tonight, I just want to remind the public that 59th District Representative Carol Senti will be hosting an education advisory forum this Thursday evening, December 13th, at 7:00 PM at the Lashan Center in Vernon Hills. And as always, we encourage the public to participate in the process with Carol, who does a great job as one of our local representatives. And Pat, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you very much. Invitation for public comment, anybody from the public who would like to speak? Nope? Okay, hearing none. Next on the agenda is the consent vote agenda, can I ask, which was reviewed earlier this evening in committee, can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Program and personnel committee chairperson, Mauer.
Okay, first, we have board policies for a second reading and adoption. The four policies are listed below, nothing has changed since last month, and we have the first reading, so we need a motion to approve those policies.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And our second item, we have two educational tour requests listed.
I'm with you, approve the two requests that's listed. Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Rudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Aye.
Bratsch.
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay, and that concludes the report.
Facilities and Finance Committee Chairperson, Arthur.
We did not have any bits to review this evening, but I do want to encourage folks to attend the January Facilities and Finance Committee meeting, where we should be discussing more on budget, cash reserve, capital, and all those fund finance banks, so hopefully the public will join us.
Okay, thank you. No update on the property committee, Special Education District of Lake County, Delegate Munstead.
Yes, we had our quarterly meeting, and the main event that was approved there is the, they've been working this year on long-range financial planning recommendations with a committee made up of representatives from the governing boards and various districts' business managers and administrators, and so this is the, it was finally approved, and the, the plan is, I've passed out to each of you. There it is, so with the new superintendent, I think this is a great project we've been, you know, working on trying to kind of move forward with SEDOL and with the input from all the feeder districts, so a lot of hard work.
Great. Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, let's see, nothing from the Illinois Association of School Boards, and that's it. Okay, so can I have a motion to move to executive session? As I mentioned earlier, we will be covering two topics, employment of employees, 5 ILCS 120/2C1, and then collective negotiation matters, 5 ILCS 120/2C2.
I make the motion that we go into executive session to discuss the plans of choice in the morning.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy.
Aye.
Munstead.
Aye.
Mauer.
Ally.
Bratsch.
Aye.
Arthur.
Aye.
Bratsch.
Aye. Okay, motion carries, and as I said earlier, we will not be taking any action following the executive session tonight. Thank you very much.